Next, we have, under Presentations from the Gallery, I see on here, Mr. Wayne Lee. That's who I have on here first, underneath number 12. Is Mr. Lee still here?
I have your copy of my testimony.
Okay, Drew will make sure that gets to everyone. Appreciate that.
As most of you know, I find transportation a very important part of my life. But if you get right down to it, it's a central component to everybody's life in this room, in this city, in this state, in this nation. Nobody goes any further than about a quarter of a mile outside of their own home, outside of a building. It doesn't happen. Unless it's in an automobile, to a bus stop, unless they have to have a special vehicle to pick them up, get them someplace. That's what has been the big issue as far as handy wheels and the bus. That's very important. What I spoke of last Thursday was the importance of there being a Public Transit Advisory Commission. The city needs a Public Transit Advisory Commission. But it certainly needs a commission with people serving on it who know what the issue is all about. Who better to serve on that commission than the Director of Public Transit, a person who can go ahead and answer technical questions, or somebody he appoints? One or two city council members. You have it right there in front of you. A member of the medical community, a member of the faith community, a member of the social services community, a member of the business community, a regular route bus rider or riders. Because who better to answer those questions than the people who ride the buses on a consistent basis? People who ride handy wheels. Something that is very important to people who don't drive and who can't get to the bus stop. A transit system is what they need to get from one place to the other in order to live. Then, a disability advocate, whether it be from the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, from the Independent Living Resource Center, from Cole County Residential Services, or some other not-for-profit organization for people with disabilities. Because the majority of the people that ride these buses, handy wheels, many of them have disabilities. Then again, there are people who are poor. Well, that would include people who ride the buses on a consistent basis. Then, someone that is not mentioned on there, but I failed to put it on there. Someone representing senior services, a senior services organization. Many people who ride these buses are seniors. They no longer drive. Or maybe they never did. What is very important, and this is this commission, council, whatever it is called, not be stacked with people who don't ride the buses on a consistent basis, or people who are employees of the city, unless they're there just to answer questions. Make sure that the people on there are people who can answer questions about the buses. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to go ahead and bring someone from Columbia. For example, someone from the Columbia Transit Bureau. Because the man who runs our transit system, he consults with them. Turn to him. Get information from him. And by the way, tonight, I am speaking as an individual citizen of Jefferson City. And only as a citizen of Jefferson City. Not from any particular group, and as a disability advocate. Because I've been a disability advocate for 37 years. And those of us who have disabilities, who do not drive, we have to get there some way. I'll be going to the Capitol tomorrow to do the work that I do. I'll be there all day. And then, a friend of mine will be taking me to Columbia because I serve on the Region 10 Council for People Developmental Disabilities. He drives. That's the way I'll get there. So we have to get around somehow. If you don't drive, you have to find a way. Many of the people, and this is a key factor. Many of the people that I got to sign petitions, those people told me they had no one to get a ride from. And when I asked them, why didn't they just ask? Ask the question, they were afraid. They were scared to ask that question. It may sound strange. But if you have a disability, and you've lived with it for years, it can be a scary question for a person until they finally have the courage to ask.
Mr. Lee, thank you for being here tonight. And I want to compliment you on what you did as far as working on a committee list. It's a very good idea. I think the overall message that Mr. Scrivener's resolution sends, and my message sends too, is I think really what we want to try to do is increase ridership with our local transit service. And, you know, our service was set up for state workers and shuttles and all that kind of stuff. And obviously, those are really no longer customers anymore like we used to have. So I think revamping the service is the key. But I really want to thank you for your time. Thank you very much for being here.
I happen to agree with you, and I appreciate what you're doing tonight very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lee? All right, Wayne, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Next, I have on the agenda is Mr. Paul Van Horn. Paul, welcome. For the record, please state your name and address. And please limit your comments to five minutes, please.
I look at the clock up here, and I think of the Louisville game.
Oh, what now?
Louisville game.
Oh, okay.
For those past athletes. How many of you watched the chamber? How many of the city council watched that game? Okay. Yes, a week ago, this past Friday, rode the bus for 10 hours. Paid for it, and I'll remember here, I have Mr. Councilman. And what did I find out? I found that individuals riding the bus, going from the east end of town to getting out to Wendy's on the west end of town, it took them an hour and a half to get there. One hour and a half. And the period of, she was a part-time employee. So if you start at 7:00 as a part-time employee, what time do you normally get off work? Your councilman can do the average on that. It broke down in this area. I also talked to elderly people on the bus. Who did we see on the bus? Well, we saw individuals going to the doctor's office. Let me ask you, when was the last time you got to the doctor's office on time with your appointment? Well, a lot of times, if you get there and your appointment's at 11:00, what time do you get out? Well, you may get out a little bit later. So I've talked to some of the individuals. I talked yesterday at the forum. We had, in fact, a JCMG. I've talked to them. I have also talked to Capital Region Medical Center. We had representative from them. And they all are saying the same thing. The problem that was originally established just does not work. Now, one of the things, having worked with many of you as far as city council in the past, Jefferson City have to have a vision. What is our vision of Jefferson City going forward? I encourage every one of the city council members to get on that bus and ride that bus periodically. To see actually what they feel, hear what they're saying. Some of them are suffering maybe quasi-dementia, which many of us elderly people like myself fear more than anything else. And one of the things that, when you set up your commission here, is I call upon you to define and to set up the commission in what we call "good faith." And those of us who have taught labor relations at the university level, good faith is honesty, sincere intention to deal fairly with others in compliance with the standards of honesty, trust and sincerity, and measured by all the persons involved. Which means a disabled, which means a minority, which means you're less affluent, which means the medical professions, doctors and medical in general, which means business representatives, which means retail workers, family members, and students that get on and off the buses to go to the various schools, like the Tripper program. How many of you are familiar with the Tripper route? And those are all things that consider. Students, actually, there were students going to Lincoln that were getting on and off the bus. There were also individuals going to the high school. There are also students going to the various other schools that we have in our community, religious schools. So I encourage, I congratulate each and every you that voted in support of this. I also congratulate my councilman, Bill Lubert, who has dealt with the fact of helping out with bringing our finances into order, which is a big factor. When, in fact, one of your big discussions was, in fact, basing your budgets on expenses rather than a past budget. Because we know what happens when we use past budgets. Because many times you have those in state work who we want to call FTEs, physicians that are vacant, but we still include them. So Bill, thanks a lot for being my councilman.
Paul, thank you for being here. Any questions for Mr. Van Horn? Paul, thank you very much for all the people that you continue to speak for within our community. We all appreciate it. Next on the list, I show Ms. Heidi Lucas. Good evening, Heidi, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Just fine.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Lucas. I live in the 3rd Ward at 1927 Hazelton Drive. And I am the Chairperson of Citizens for JeffTran. We first want to thank you for seeing the importance of a robust public transportation system and restoring the funding to the three hours in the middle of the day. Over the past few weeks, since the announcement of the cuts, Citizens for JeffTran has collected close to 500 signatures from community members who believe that a robust public transportation system is important for Jefferson City because it promotes public health, fuels economic development, is good for the environment, provides affordable and safe mobility for all of our citizens, and builds a better community. Moving forward, Citizens for JeffTran encourages the mayor and city council to form a committee and advisory board to explore how to increase ridership and increase service in the Jefferson City area. We recommend representation from all sectors, as well as riders and business people. Citizens for JeffTran would be happy to help facilitate this process. And the agency I work for, Central Missouri Community Action, has worked closely with the Columbia Transit issues in the past. And would be happy to work on that moving forward. In conclusion, thank you again for doing what is best for all of the citizens of Jefferson City. Thank you.
Heidi, thank you. I have one quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned Columbia.
Mm-hmm.
Are they a fixed route system?
That is a good question, and...
Because different staff members have been telling me that maybe we've outgrown the fixed route system here in town. And if we could go to more of an on-demand system. It may not be door-to-door, maybe it's intersection-to-intersection. I'm not sure. But that may be better. So I'm just curious your thoughts on that.
I believe they are a fixed route system. I know in the past, they were facing a 50% cut in their transportation budget. And so they've explored other ways. And they've actually increased some of their routes that they're doing.
Well, I think a point that Mr. Van Horn brought up earlier, and so did Mr. Lee. You know, when you look at our aged population here in Jefferson City, most of those couples probably don't want to move out of their current homes. So if their current home is not on a bus route, I think one goal that we need to keep in mind is a way to get citywide service.
I definitely agree with that. And it also, not just our age population, but low-income populations who are required to go from, like the example Mr. Van Horn gave of the person who took an hour and a half to get to her job in the morning just across town. I think something like that would be feasible in addition to a fixed route system. As well as possibly increasing hours of ridership as well.
Exactly. Any other questions of Ms. Lucas? Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a former councilman, Mr. Dave Griffith. Dave, welcome. I think you know the drill.
Yes, it's the mayor.
How is it on that side of the podium?
David Griffith, 1207 Peyton Drive. Mr. Mayor and city council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to talk to you. And the subject I want to talk to you about is your pay, and the pay of the city council, and the pay of the mayor. Being a former city councilman, I feel like I'm qualified to speak to this matter. And I appreciate this particular forum to be able to address you. This is an issue that I am sure will attract a lot of attention given the recent news about the budget shortfall. But I think the big-picture takeaway that we have here is the work that the council and the mayor do for this city is of tremendous value to the city, and especially to the citizens of Jefferson City. The stipend pay that is awarded to council and mayor is a bargain, given the amount that each one spends in the service of this community. For those who think that the only time that the council gets together is at every other Monday, you are sadly mistaken. Not only do they have these meetings, but they have work sessions, budget hearings, work nights, retreats. Then there are the five standing committees that each councilman is on. And some serve as liaisons for boards and commissions. And then, there are the special city events that the council is oftentimes expected to attend. You add all these up, and you divide it by what the pay is, and the hourly rate barely borders on minimum wage. However, however, each city councilman that is sitting here today, they are sitting here not because of the pay that they receive. They are here because of their love for this city and for their service to their fellow neighbors. I know that when I decided to run for the 5th Ward seat, I spoke with my predecessor, Dan Clint. And the purpose of the meeting was to ask him for his support in my campaign. And also to find out what I could expect if I was elected, and what my duties would be if I were elected, and what would be expected of me if I were elected. It was during this meeting that I found out that the city council was actually paid for their service. Up until that time, that was something that I was not aware of. And then Dan gave me some really good advice. He told me to open a separate savings account and to have the city's check directly deposited into that. And so I could use that money to take my wife on a nice vacation and repay her for the amount of time that I spent in these chambers and in all the meetings. That was some great advice. And one that I passed along to council colleagues, both past and present. I'm sure that you all will look at what all the other cities are paying their mayor and their city council. And this is all well and good, but quite frankly, I couldn't care less. Not because, because I don't really know what their city officials do. But I do know what our city officials are asked. The city council and the mayor and the skill sets that they bring to each one of their seats are providing an invaluable service to its citizens as well as, and is well worth the money that we're paying them. I would like to make a recommendation. And I know I have no power to make a recommendation at all. But I would like to propose that the mayor and the city council's pay be doubled. And even if, and even at that, the citizens of Jefferson City would still be getting an excellent deal. I want to thank you for your time. I felt like somebody needed to speak that has sat in these chairs. And understands the amount of time commitment that it takes to represent the city. I want to personally thank each one of you for what you do, for the time that you take, and for your service to Jefferson City. And be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilman Dave?
God bless you.
David, thanks for being here. And thanks for what you do for the Red Cross, Dave. You're a good man, thanks. Moving on, next, that's it for number 12, unless I missed anyone. Rod Chapel was supposed to be here tonight. And thanks to the electronic age, he just sent me a text. And he's unable to make it, but he had some other people that he was going to bring with him. If they get here later, we may entertain a motion to have them speak if they get here in time. Next on the agenda, what's next, fellas? Next, we have number 13, which is the Consent Agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to accept.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Consent Agenda. That's number 13 tonight. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, no bids over $50,000 tonight. Moving into Bill's pending, we'll have first reading, I'm sorry, third reading of 2012-154.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated for the Stadium Boulevard right turn lane at Edgewood and the sidewalk at Target Drive Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, this bill's a construction contract. It's with Sam Gaines, who was the lowest bidder on the project. It's for a turn lane, a right turn lane on Stadium Drive on Edgewood. And it will also construct a small piece of sidewalk near Target and the Mosher's Drive entrance that'll connect into the Missouri Boulevard sidewalk project. Cost for the project's $129,413. And the staff recommends approval.
Any questions of staff on 2012-154? Any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2012-155.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for transportation enhancement funds.
Mr. Matt.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a grant agreement, basically for a trailhead at the Missouri River Ped Bridge near Clay Street and Main Street. The grant agreement is for an 80-20 grant that's administered through MoDOT. The total project has estimated to be around $91,000. The city's portion would be approximately $18,000. And the staff would recommend approval.
Any questions of staff or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich. Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2012-156.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for transportation enhancement funds.
Matt?
Yes, another grant agreement, as clerk indicated. It's a transportation enhancement grant, similar to the one we just talked about. This is for the reconstruction of Water Street near the Train Depot. Total cost of the project's been estimated to be around $591,000. The city portion would be approximately $118,000. The staff would recommend approval of this agreement.
Questions for Matt or staff or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2012-157.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Mr. Marash, it's your lucky night.
It certainly is. The, this basically would authorize the staff to trade in our TV truck that the wastewater division uses. The council's already approved the expenditure to buy a new truck. And this would authorize the old one to be traded in. We'd recommend approval.
Okay, any debate or questions by council to staff or amongst each other? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2012-158.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County Special Services to provide handy wheels transit service to their clients.
Matt?
Yes, as clerk indicated, this is an agreement with Cole County Special Services. It's basically, it's one of our revenue sources in the transit budget. This basically switches it how we do it now. And they're able to apply a grant to this money. So there's a potential for an increase in the revenue, but it would be slight.
And Matt, this would still just be for city residents?
This is with Cole County Special Services.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other questions of staff or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2012-159.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to the salary of the mayor and city council.
Drew?
The current bill would reduce the salary of the mayor and city council to $1. It would begin at the start of the next term. I think Councilman Pope has a substitute, which we did hand out at the Brown Bag. Which, since I've got the mic, I might as well just say what it is and save everybody the trouble. It sets the salary at either the current salary or $1. And would require the mayor and each councilperson to elect which salary to accept within seven days of being sworn into office.
Okay, I guess at this point in time, we would need a motion. Go ahead, Dr. Pope. Dr. Pope, your mic, please.
I would move that we, I offer the substitute based on the discussions that we have had with Mr. Chappell,
that we have had with Mr. Chappelle, that, uh, the way it was originally proposed, uh, the one unintended consequence would be that, uh, it could potentially exclude candidates. And in no way, uh, was that intended. Obviously, the intent was based on our 1.6 million dollar, uh, financial shortfall. Uh, it was proposed, uh, on our original list of items to be considered. And so, uh, so that it would be possible to serve as a volunteer, essentially. I have changed it to either or.
Okay, is there a second for the substitute before us? Seeing none, that would die due to lack of a second. So we'll go back to the original bill, which has been third read, correct? Okay, um, debate or conversation on 2012-159? Dr. Pope?
Um, we've discussed this, uh, individually, and, uh, as a group, uh, as I said, uh, we had a shortfall. Uh, we have a community standard in our area that besides, uh, the council and, uh, county commission, uh, most political subdivisions serve as volunteers. Our library board, our, uh, uh, school board, uh, and it was interesting that Councilman Griffith mentioned that, uh, he didn't know until afterwards that he was going to be paid, nor did I, and I've spoken to other council members that they didn't know, and that they had run for various other things, and that the pay was only offered based on our financial condition, uh, that we have a community standard of volunteerism anyway. There are, uh, numerous lists that indicate cities of our size, uh, serve with similar reimbursements, some a dollar, some nothing. So these were my reasons. We will have, uh, as we go through these cuts, people come to us as advocates for their particular, uh, desires as we approach this next budget. And, uh, although through vacancy savings, we have been able to balance this budget, income seems to be continuing to fall. Uh, we will possibly lose each and every issue, uh, as advocates come forward. I felt like that a council that was serving, uh, as a group of volunteers, would make a statement to the staff and to the community that, uh, we're in it with them, and, um, and that was my purpose. In no way whatsoever was I attempting to exclude any member of the public from running for public office. That was, of course, my reason for making it optional, so that someone could serve as a volunteer, uh, and based on our charter, which does require some payment, not accept the full amount. So, those are my reasons, and, uh, I, I would say additionally, uh, I, I did this as a, in memory of a person who fought during the charter years, the formation, uh, Mrs. William Weldon, uh, was adamant and fought hard that we be volunteer citizen legislators, that we serve this public without compensation. However, the charter does make it possible for us to receive expenses. And Mrs. Weldon, uh, a great public servant in our community, always fought for a citizen volunteer legislator. So those are my thoughts.
All right, Dr. Pope, thank you very much. Uh, any other comments by, uh, other council members or debate on, uh, 2012-159? Seeing none, roll call, oh, I'm sorry, Carrie?
I did just want to mention, and I think really the only reason I'm commenting is because it's your last meeting, so I do want, I want to comment on this bill. Normally, I don't think I would. But when Councilman Griffith came to the podium and made the comment about, and, and you two, and even I, I don't think any of us realized that, that there is a compensation that goes along with being on the council, and that's not why we do it. But I think too, we may not realize quite how many hours and meetings are truly required to do it well, and, and the compensation, um, doesn't truly cover our expenses, but that's okay. That's not, that's not why we do it. Even though, I, I think the reason I want to comment, Dr. Pope, is even though I'll be voting against the bill, that I truly appreciate your passion for not just this bill, but I think every bill that you've ever brought forward all these years. I know this isn't the time for presentations to outgoing councilmen, but I just want to say, um, that it's something I admire of you, of your, when you, uh, are passionate about something, that you really give it thought, and you, you truly, I don't know that I've seen somebody on the council that just truly takes it so seriously, and so you, you really have it in your heart to try to always do what, what you think is right, what you think's right for your ward, and at least get us thinking beyond what we normally would be. And I do appreciate you and what you've brought to the council over these years. So I think I'd want to make the comment because I, I don't like ending on this note, but I want you to know that I look at it as, uh, an appreciation for all the bills you brought forward all this time. So even though my last vote, which I, I hate to say would be against something you're bringing forward, I do appreciate this and all that you've done over the years, so thank you.
Any other comments on, uh, bill 2012-159 or debate? Uh, Mr. Weber?
Uh, the charter was, was written, written in 1986, and there was a provision there for the council to set a form of compensation. Uh, from 86 through probably 95, the council was reimbursed for expenses. They were eligible for city retirement and eligible for city insurance. 95, the council, uh, changed that to where you're no longer eligible for retirement, nor the city health insurance, medical insurance, but did establish the stipend that we're working under today. There's been no increases to that. It's been on the books for 18 years, and, and, uh, while I don't think any of us run for the money, certainly for this, for the compensation, it does help offset some expenses, and I think it's fair and reasonable, um, that, that there be some form, and I think what's being, uh, paid now is very, very con, uh, fair and reasonable to, to the council person. So I will be voting against the motion as well.
Any other, uh, discussion on 2012-159? Seeing none, um, roll call, please.
Prather?
No.
Schulte?
No.
Scrivner?
No.
Weber?
No.
Bray?
No.
Carroll?
No.
Henry?
No.
Lubert?
No.
Mahalovich?
No.
Pope?
Aye.
Uh, motion fails. Uh, 2012-160 has already been brought up early tonight. Uh, 2012-161 was brought up early tonight. Uh, since this is the last meeting of this council, uh, we don't have anything on the informal council, or on the informal calendar. Uh, we were able to, uh, to do, uh, the, the transit resolution, which I'll call that. Want to thank, uh, Councilman Scrivner for contacting me Friday, and, uh, everyone who co-sponsored that. Uh, we don't have anyone to speak on, under number 18, uh, under this agenda at this point in time. I'm going to move just a second. We, is there any sc, uh, staff discussion on present, on presentation topics? I'm going to hold council presentation topics until after we make a couple, uh, of plaque presentations here. Anything from the staff? Nathan? Good to go. All right, uh, with that, uh, is there any new business to bring before this council? With that, um, I have the distinct honor, uh, former mayor, uh, John Landware, started a tradition, I'm assuming at the beginning of his term, Nathan, uh, that as, uh, members, uh, were leaving the council, he would try to describe them in one word or, or a couple words. And, uh, first one I have on my, uh, list, uh, tonight, uh, being from the, being from the fourth ward, we have councilwoman Carrie Carroll, and, uh, obviously, we've had, uh, Councilman Lubert. What I chose tonight for Councilman Lubert is the word, uh, genuine, which is actually having, uh, or apparent qualities of character sincerely and honestly felt or experienced. Bill Lubert came to this council about two years ago, obviously, within an experienced career, an experienced family, and his wife here, she's here, right? All right, I think she's helped him with a lot of these bills over the last couple of years, and many lifelong experiences in business. Uh, back in my JC days, uh, we gave away a spark plug award, uh, to a member that showed a renewed interest in the club's activities. And it didn't make any difference if they were a member that, uh, had been here for a while, or, or, or a new member, uh, like Bill. In the last two years, no matter what the time or place, or the event, Bill and his wife have always been there representing our city. Bill has volunteered to serve on numerous extra committees that I want to personally thank him for. You may not realize this as the public, but a lot of extra committees when it comes to, uh, trying to find different, uh, department heads and that kind of thing. It can be a very big commitment for, uh, the council members that do that, because many times those are, uh, six to eight hour events and two or three days long. Uh, Bill, I hope that you will still serve on boards and commissions, because I know you've got it in your heart, brother. Uh, genuine, my word for fourth ward councilman, Bill Lubert. Bill, thank you very much for the, for the service to our city. I thought about this on the way here. Uh, two years ago, I didn't need these glasses, but something, I guess, kind of, has kind of changed, and, and I've noticed the beard's getting a little grayer too. So I guess it just must be, uh, something in the air here, so to speak. Has anyone heard the commercial that talks about chewing gum? Have you ever heard of that, Dr. Pope? At the end of that commercial, or, or, or during the commercial, they always say, "Nine out of 10 dentists that chew gum select so-and-so." Well, sitting next to, uh, to Mr. Pope, uh, when I was a councilman a couple of years ago, and we shared seats next to each other, uh, at our bagels and after meetings and all the above, uh, I didn't realize this, but if you're the one out of 10 dentists that don't chew gum, you really don't want someone to offer you gum, because it's just one more temptation. But, uh, Brian, you, uh, my word for you is passion. Passion is an intense, emotional, compelling feeling, full of enthusiasm or desire to do something. Brian has been passionate about several different areas and movements, especially in the last few years. However, I realize that Brian is truly passionate about life as a whole. Brian has been a passionate advocate for the less fortunate and their dental needs for the last several years, after retiring from his own practice. Everyone is moved by something, whether it be a calling from God, a feeling from the inside. Something obviously moves Brian, and I think passion has driven Dr. Pope. I wish him well in his next chap, chapter of life, and I want to thank him for his years of service, his friendly laugh, and everything that he's done, uh, for us other councilmen and the community. Dr. Pope, good luck in the future. I know that your family's here, could you guys please stand up? Uh, we obviously couldn't do these jobs without you guys. I know there's, how many grandkids out of seven, Brian, are here? Four out of seven, so he talks about you guys a, a great deal, and, uh, Brian, we're going to miss you. Good luck. There you go. Okay, Brian, thanks again for your service. Uh, this next one's a little bit difficult for me, because I've known this guy since, since I was just a kid. I wasn't sure what to pick for Weber. I could have picked several stories, but was told not to, so I didn't. Uh, what I've, uh, chosen for Mr. Bob Weber, who's been on the council for nearly eight years, right, Bob? He could have ran one more time this year and had what? Month or two months, which some people would say, yeah, I'm going to do that and take the reappointment, but not Bob, he's a, he's a stand-up guy. Uh, devoted, which I think can be best characterized by Webster's dictionary as loyalty and devotion. I've known Bob since I was a teenager. His kids and I rode the bus together, and we went to the same school, so I always saw Bob as really a friend's parent. That all changed in 1986. A week after graduating from my high school here in Jefferson City, I found myself as a brand-new JC at the fairgrounds. Bob was JC president, fair chairman, and ran a successful business at Atkins at the time. A great deal of undertaking for one person. During those work parties during the fair, I found myself helping Bob's wife paint signs. Restrooms, beer garden, arena, you name it, we painted it. We probably painted 50 to 100 signs that summer. As it was, and still is, a tradition of the JCs, there's a pretty large party after the fair. Well, that was no different in 86. At that particular after-the-fair party, there was many plaques and awarded, and awards given out, uh, for that event. On that night, as a new JC, I was extremely surprised that I got awarded. Bob gave me one of the paint rags that we'd used in all those signs. A small gesture, a small show of support and gratitude to something that Bob has been doing for our community for years. I've always looked up at Bob as a mentor, someone that I would like to become. Bob and I have been a lot, been through a lot over the last 30 years, being the JCs together and several other organizations. Bob is among a small group of people that my girls call uncle. I am sure Bob will be running for another office someday. When he does, he will be good at it, whatever it is, period. Being devoted as a businessman, councilman, father, friend, and husband is something that is just in Bob's character. Woo, I'll miss you on the council, and I think I speak for the entire community when I say thank you for your years of service. Good luck to you in the future, guy. Yeah, I'll, I'll let you have a word just a second. Uh, I figured this out today. Roughly in, uh, eight years, or almost eight years, uh, Bob has probably attended anywhere between 800 and 1,400 meetings. Now, some of those might be small meetings. Uh, obviously, a lot of them are council meetings, but that's a, that's a true commitment. I remember a few years ago, Bob was a neighbor on our street, and I didn't know anything about the city council back then, but it was well before, uh, fax machines and all that other kind of good stuff. And, uh, Bob would get home, he'd go to his answering machine, and, wasn't married at the time, and he had all these post, post-it notes everywhere on his kitchen. I mean, like the poster, like the post-it salesman. But that's how Bob kept track of everyone, and I said, uh, "Bob, what are you doing?" And he says, "Well, if I write it down, it will remind me tomorrow to do it." So, "Bob, I'm going to guess you got a few post-it notes with you today." Told you. All right, uh, guys, we'll give you a chance to rebuttal right quick, and then we're going to move on to the next council, so.